Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Stacia. Steve Jarvis.
Here.
Bill Miner.
Yes, here.
John Johnson. Jim Peterson. We have a quorum with one absent. Okay, before we get started, are there any conflicts of interest that anyone would like to bring up at this point? Okay, moving on to the consent calendar, approval of the 526 2020 agenda, approval of the 511 2020 meeting minutes, approval of claims, setting a hearing date for June 8th 2020 for this and that bar teak, 124 Main Street, for both a retail malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license as well as a retail wine and cider license. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Motion Alderman Jarvis to accept the consent calendar, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Stacia. Bill Miner.
Yes.
John Johnson.
Yes.
Steve Jarvis.
Yes.
Motion carries. Public comment, members of the public may speak on any matter that is not on the agenda. We ask that you please limit your remarks to three minutes per speaker.
That's Sunby, 369 Deegan Drive. I, I'm here again regarding Deegan Drive. We've been in here five years, we've talked about this every time we're here. We continually have erosion, we continually have more and more traffic. I see people there looking at lots to buy. Kathy, you received and spoke about what is going on in my yard. And I don't know how long that will continue, I mean, in the meantime, what do we do? I have nothing against daycare. We have a daycare right up our road which creates much more traffic. It's terribly dusky, it's terribly muddy. And for five years, we've been gonna work on this. Brett was gonna get things put together, I don't know where we're at. I don't know if you guys say something, or am I supposed to do all the talking, or what? I don't know how long this is gonna take, I know how long the sidewalk project took. I don't know what's been done in the last five years, you know, besides the sidewalk, which has been in the works for a number of years. We got a development going up on the hill, which is not the city, that was Mr. Jim's call. So besides that, I know there's issues to be done, but where are we in line with what, what is happening? I know we're gonna have a bridge project down there, supposedly, which has been talked about. Is there a way to put this together with the street? Being they're gonna tear the bridge up? We only have one way in and out of Deegan Street. It's down the bottom of the hill. I asked if you could put a counter on that street. That hasn't been done, maybe you can't do it. But I'm there all day long, I see all the traffic that's there. It just needs to be addressed. The erosion, just drive up there and look, they've cut a trench now into our yard. The road, you got storm sewers on the east side of the road. The grade of the roads slides to my place, and storm sewers over there do nothing. And there's nothing on our side of the street. And I'm in the position where it all runs into my yard. So I would just like to see something done, or have some kind of plan, some kind of vision of what we're going to do with it.
So Mr. Sunby and I shared a little bit of communication earlier today, as this is the public comment. Typically, it's not a time to be able to have open dialogue. What I did advise Mr. Sunby is, we would, I will see that this gets put as a discussion item on the next agenda. In the interim, I'm gonna go out there with Brett and take a look at the erosion that's happening, and have some photographic information for the council to see and take a look at. He's also asked a couple of things about cars and counting and things like that, so we will look into that to see what can be done and what we can do. And at this point, we'll have that as an open discussion item at our next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Sunby.
Two weeks.
Yes, two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
I'm not gonna harp, Leroy Barker, 416 Lasie Score. I'm not gonna harp on this road thing anymore, but I just wanna bring something up, that in the wintertime, when the snowplow comes up there, the guy that's doing the snowplowing now has got that weight so deep that he has taken more of that road off. And it is in terrible shape. And I have been here since 2012, and in 2013, I came to the first meeting and asked about road paving. This has been going on for that many years, and we've been getting put off, put off, put off. And nobody, we're gonna look into it, we're gonna put it on our priority list, blah, blah, blah. A lot of BS, all I've heard back and forth from, not just you guys. I mean, this has been going on for years. And it, something needs to be done. The roads keeps going away and going away, and the guy that's grading it now, nothing against him, but he's doing a terrible job. I mean, it just, he's tore up that road more than anything. But anyway, that's my two cents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing no addition to public comment, I'll close public comment, move on to action items. Action item, 7A is the, we have more wine renewals, malt beverage and South Dakota wine renewals. So we've got several of them on here, typically, the way we've handled this is, I'll read the first one, and then I'll get a motion to approve, second usually from the same council, and it'll kinda move it along a little quicker. So with that being said, we're on action item 7AA, approval of 2020-2021 retail on/off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine renewal for Dollar General Store, 681 Main Street.
Is everything in order as far as taxes and?
Everything is in order, I have not received Dollar General's application, I received their money, but not an application with it, so we need to hold that one or table it until I receive the application from it. We can't move forward with that one. Everything else, we, the taxes are paid, Rudy's are not posted to, Desperados are not posted to. The website showing that it's approved, but I have confirmation that, yes, it's been taken care of. All the rest of them are done, signed, sealed, ready to go.
So I'll make a motion to table Dollar General until they get their application in.
Okay, thank you. Motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll call vote, please. John Johnson.
Yes.
Steve Jarvis.
Yes.
Bill Miner.
Yes.
Okay, approval for malt beverage and South Dakota wine renewal for Desperados, 301 Main Street.
Make the motion to approve.
Motion Alderman Jarvis, second Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Steve Jarvis.
Yes.
Bill Miner.
Yes.
John Johnson.
Yes.
Approval of 2020-2021 malt beverage and South Dakota wine renewal for Twisted Pine, 216 Main Street.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Approval Alderman Jarvis, second Alderman Johnson, roll call vote, any conversation? Roll call vote, please. Phil Miner.
Yes.
John Johnson.
Yes.
Steve Jarvis.
Yes.
Approval of malt beverage and wine license for Heart of the Hills Convenience Store, 101 Main Street.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion on the table and seconded, any discussion? Roll call vote, please. John Johnson.
Yes.
Steve Jarvis.
Yes.
Phil Miner.
Yes.
Approval of malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine renewal for Heart of the Hills West Conoco, 632 Main Street.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Steve Jarvis.
Yes.
Phil Miner.
Yes.
John Johnson. Approval of malt beverage and South Dakota wine farm, farm wine renewal for Harney Peak Inn, 125 Main Street.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion on the table, any discussion? Roll call vote, please. John Johnson.
Yes.
Steve Jarvis.
Yes.
Bill Miner.
Yes.
And lastly, approval of 2020-2021 malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine renewal for Rico's, 148 Main Street.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion on the table, any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Phil Miner.
Yes.
John Johnson. Steve Jarvis.
Yes.
Motion carried. Action item 7B, approval of sound permit, 156 Main Street, Cream Stephanie Wire.
So, just a simple sound permit for Cream, it, it's, sounds as if they just wanna do maybe a two-piece, little outdoor music on the first Friday of every month. At their location, they'll have a microphone and a speaker, it'll be contained to that area. That's about it. A little stage or a platform or something they'll be on. So I recommend approval.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion to approve, Alderman Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Jarvis, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please. Steve Jarvis.
Yes.
Bill Miner.
Yes.
John Johnson.
Yes.
Motion carried. Action item 7C, 2020 budget review for COVID-19. And Stacia's gonna take us.
Um, I put together some worksheets for you guys to go over for each fund, the general fund, the triple B, or the grocery receipts tax, the bid, and then the water and the sewer. We did receive our property taxes in. Yes, it was a little on the lower side than what we, you know, get, but it was right in line. I believe we're only 5,000 over what we, lower than what we did last year at this time, to date. So if you guys have any questions, I will answer them for you as much as I can.
Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Miner, you have the floor.
I have a question. On the answers you submitted, you said there were 74 delinquent water sewer accounts for approximately $9,500. Is that typical? Or is that low or high?
That's actually very low. Our account clerk.
The amount or the number?
Both. Most of those are duplicate people. It's not, I mean, that's time periods for, you know, 30, 60, 90, and 120 days that you're looking at. That, that people, but it's, that they're delinquent all the way through, not just.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, you're looking at 30 days, we have 40 customers that are delinquent. And then at 60, 21. So those are the ones that we try to get on and stay on top of. And she does a very excellent job of keeping our delinquent accounts down for our water and sewer.
How far do they have to be behind before you disconnect?
Usually at 90 days is usually when we do, but in like this case, we have two very large water leaks where we have a payment agreement with them, where they're working on paying the balance down. So we work on there. There's a couple of them that I had her send on to collections because they're final bills and stuff like that that are on this too. And we have to keep the, they remain on there until we get full collected, or we decide to bring, I decide to bring it to council and have them, have you guys write it off.
Thank you. Alderman Miner.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else, Alderman Miner? Okay, any?
No, I just wanna thank her, she did a fantastic job putting all the information together.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any other council discussion on the budget or the review? Okay, we will not need a motion or a vote on this, as it really was kind of just a review. But we had been asked to put it up there as an action item, so that's what we did. I believe the next milestone that we talked about is in July, is that, or is it June? Stacia?
It really depends, we're gonna see at the end of July, or end of June, will be our May numbers for both of them, 'cause you're gonna be able to see what sales tax we've received for May, which will be, you know, kind of a, see where we're at, if we're in line with how much we've collected so far in sales taxes this year. Also, my close, the next one won't be honestly until July 20th, where we're gonna see the bid money come in to see whether or not our hotel taxes have increased at all from, you know, our July, our, our, yeah, our June.
Hotel.
Yeah. Numbers, so.
Okay, so then I would expect then not at the next meeting, but the meeting after that in June will have another update and a discussion.
Yep, just a review of them.
Okay. Okay, and?
May I, may I have one more question?
Absolutely, go ahead.
It may be unfair to spring this on you, but in the sales and use tax fund, are there any subaccounts that you feel are in danger of going over budget other than legal expenses that we already know about?
Not so far. I, everyone else is really cut back on spending anything on supplies. The guys have everything, according to Travis, and the receipts have not come in anymore regarding fixing and making sure everything's in working order for the rest of the summer. So as long as we don't have any major breakdowns on equipment or anything like that, we should be ahead of the game, a part of, you know, with our supplies and repairs and maintenance.
And Alderman Miner, just to let you know, as far as additional chemicals related to the virus, we did receive a five gallon bucket of sanitizer that's being utilized. So that helped us out, as there was no cost for that. In addition, if there are any other COVID-related expenses that we're tracking, we have been asked to track those, and if it has not been set up yet, and we were notified last week that there is gonna be a meeting that'll be set up with Stacia, and I will attend it as well, to talk about some of the grant money that was given to the state of South Dakota, and how much, and what are the things that we can actually request reimbursement for. The one thing that's still outstanding with that, and I'll go ahead and cover it at this point since we're talking about COVID, is that the money that has been given to the state of South Dakota has not been earmarked to be able to use for revenue shortages. So right now, Senator Rounds is working on a bill, and there is a push by Governor Noem to be able to utilize some of those funds towards shortages in some of our revenue. So hopefully, that bill will pass, and once it does, then we could also be in a position where if we do have any defined revenue shortages, we may actually be able to get state assistance from the COVID fund that was there. So again, it is another, another avenue where we may be able to supplement any shortages that we may see. Okay, any questions or any further discussion? Okay, I'll go ahead then and close the topic, as no vote is needed for that, and move on to the next project D and E. They are similar and connected, so I believe that a conversation to address them both can occur. However, we will make motions individually. So with that being said, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Brett, and Brett, can you concisely explain what we've got?
Yep. So this is a, this is a holdover item from a month ago, when we, you know, about a month and a half ago, we started the discussion about revenues and expenditures of the city and the fiscal health of the city. And so we're, we're having that discussion tonight again, because, one, we have the property tax information that was in your pocket, plus it's just another opportunity for us to check in and see where our comfort level is with moving forward on projects. You know, the, we're at a juncture where it's still kinda difficult to determine the hotel revenue, because it's traditionally kind of a snow period for us. You know, we don't see the May revenues from the hotel tax until they report June 20th. So we won't see what happened in May until the June 20th meeting. So the last report that Stacia would have gotten was May 20th, which was for April tax revenue. So everything so far has indicated that we were headed for kind of a normal year. And, and now, you know, it's kind of, well, what's May gonna bring and what April is going to bring? And so we've kind of been, I think, ahead of the curve financially as far as looking at the numbers. I know Stacia and I talked last week, there's a lot of other communities that are kind of just starting that discussion. I know Rapid City is proposing 10% or 11% cuts within their budget, and we did that two meetings ago. So really, the bid board project is a kind of a comfort level of where you think we're going to be at if we should pursue going out to bid. I don't know that my information has changed any as relates to that. I think there's, there's still a concern that, that, that $2 per room night tax won't come in like we had expected it. If that's the case, then there would be a, potentially a larger burden put on the general fund to loan more money to the bid project if we proceed with the contractor to pay those bills. I think there's a lot of discussion about, you know, the architectural plans for the senior center at Dunn. Those, I think, were shared at the last senior board meeting, which occurred last Wednesday, I think it was. So that one's ready to go. The asphalt alleyway project had already been put out to bid once before, and it came back quite high. It was 300, I can't remember the number now, but that bid was rejected. And so the thought with this, kind of the hiccup with the virus, you know, oil prices were down, maybe there's some hungry contractors out there that we could fit it in, get a little bit better price. The other, the other question is just the construction window of saying, can we extend our construction window out so that we nicely fit into somebody's construction window, so that we get one or two more people to bid on it, and then there's more of a competition going on? So I don't know that I have any hard data, but this is just kind of a revisit conversation of where you're at, and if you're comfortable of moving forward or not.
So Brett, before we go there, Kale was supposed to reach out to some of the contractors that had picked up packets for the alleyway, but did not actually turn in a formal bid. Was that work completed?
So what Kale did is he outreach to the people that had expressed interest in that asphalt alley project. And really, the predominant reason why they didn't bid on our project, there was definitely an interest. But what had happened is that there were several other bid openings that had occurred, and they were awarded several other projects, so their calendar was filling out. So that's why they didn't put a bid in on our project, because they were already booked. So that's one of the biggest concerns I have, is getting us in on the calendar somewhere, getting us essentially that time crossed off on their calendar that they're here for our project. On the other side of it, I, you know, not knowing what the revenues will be, it's hard to, it's hard to go to Stacia and say, "Okay, Stacia, I've got a, you know, a 400, $600,000 project, you know, cost liability against the city to move forward on." So, but that's the main reason why they didn't bid, is that the companies that had inquired already got a couple of their jobs awarded to them, their calendar was already full. And our time window didn't match up with what available time they had free, so.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question, I know that some of the hotels, they were getting a lot of cancellations. Have we went back to them and maybe talked to some of the owners about, do things look a little bit better now? Are they getting more reservations that they were losing before? Have we done any contact like that?
I, I have not spoken to them in at least probably two weeks, and that was just when I talked to the bid board. So I talked to Shane Schreiner, I talked to Tim Johnson, I have not done any outreach to Vic, but if we can tap his brain while he's at the meeting, I'm up for that.
Yeah, I, the, we, you know, from a reservation, losing reservation standpoint, the reservations these days are coming in later, later, later. People are just deciding, even last summer, or the summer before, they're deciding at the last minute to do their thing, a couple, three weeks out, a month out, whatever. So when the COVID thing happened, February, March, there weren't, the reservations weren't piling in by any stretch at that time. And when they should have been piling in is when COVID was getting started, so it just kinda stalled everything. It's pretty bleak out there right now. I mean, it is, there is nothing, there is nothing coming in, you know, there's. I personally have reason to believe or think that it's, it could be our best July, August, Septembers that we ever have had. Just simply because people are getting out and starting to move around, you saw that this weekend. Again, that's a local 500 mile radius type of a weekend, you know, but it was packed. You saw Main Street was, I understand that the Granite Sports had the two best days in a row on a Memorial Day weekend that they've ever had. You know, so that, but it's a local weekend, you know, so it's not gonna happen this weekend, probably not. But I think that things are gonna continue to open up, and as they open up, I think people will be coming this way. I mean, we're still on the news, we're still showing, you know, no, they kinda pile us in with everybody that's opened up, when in fact, we kinda really never did quote-unquote "shut down." But I think we're inviting enough, and word is out there that I, I think that we'll, we'll do, we'll fare as, as well as we can. I don't know how well that's gonna be, you know, it's, it's hard to tell.
Thanks for your honesty.
Yeah, I've, I've heard that, that there were at least three or four different businesses that had a phenomenal Sunday and an okay Monday here in town, one of the best. So that's nice to hear, I mean, it was busy, I was up here on Sunday, and Main Street was packed.
There's a, kind of another, it's kind of going a little bit more, there are some motels that are closing down. I think I understand there's a couple of them in Custer that are out of, you know, a big outfit down there that are closing. And so that's gonna help mitigate supply, and if that mitigates supply, then some of them are gonna enter to, you know, enter to our bedroom too, so it's, it's hard to tell, you know, how that, all that shakes out.
Yeah, I think people were ready to get out this weekend. It'd be interesting to see how our numbers, and it's probably gonna be one few weeks before we know the numbers, this Memorial Day versus the past Memorial Days.
Janet can tell you all that if she's not on today, but.
So I think there's, if, if we're wanting to proceed to go out to bid, here are, here are a few things to consider. One, if we're worried about the 2020 budget, if we, if we adjust our construction window so that it encompasses some of 2021, that will help. Doing that construction window like that would open it up to maybe more construction company that having interest in it, 'cause you've got a bigger construction window. You also would push that financial burden into 2021, and it's not just in 2020. And so I think there's some ups, there's some big upside there. And, and, and again, my concern is getting it on the calendar of somebody's, you know, how far ahead have they locked themselves in? The one thing about going out to bid is that when the bids come in, and if you don't like them, saying they're too high a cost, you can always deny them and say, "No, we're not moving forward." But, you know, we've already, we already put the asphalt out once. If we put these other ones out and don't get. If we put these other ones out and don't get the price that we're happy with, you know, how many times can you fish the waters? And throw your bait out there and just kind of yank it away from, um, people? Will they lose interest? That's kind of the only downside to, to doing that.
I, I think you kind of made this comment a couple of meetings ago, it's not a good thing, just keep throwing them out there.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, it's, they, they get like, well, now they're just fishing and, you know, we don't want to bid on it.
Yeah, I, it, you know, there's a, there's a balance in there somewhere. It's kind of like the stock market, you're never going to buy at the absolute lowest point and you're never going to sell at the absolute highest point. If you are, there's some other inside trading going on that, that, that I want to know about, you know? Because, you know, if you're, if you're timing it perfectly, that's, you know, 100% not expected to do that.
Right.
So.
Mayor?
Yep, Alderman Minor, I was just going to ask if you had anything that you wanted to add.
Well, I have a comment and a question. I couldn't find the, uh, asphalt oil price statewide average for South Dakota, but I found it for Wyoming. And it hasn't essentially not changed February, March, or April. Down 0.37%, so the hope that asphalt prices are going to follow, uh, gas prices down, uh, didn't happen. And then my question would be, has the city engineer, um, said what timeframe? He would recommend that the project be bid to get the maximum number of, uh, or potential maximum number of, uh, bidders interested?
You're, you're just talking about the alleyway portion of the project?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I did, I did have a conversation with Kale. And we talked about, you know, the, the asphalt plant has only opened so far into the fall. And so he felt that if we could extend that construction window into next spring, um, that's way more time than they should need to get the work done. But it may allow, that bigger window may allow more contractors to, to allow them to bid on it because they have an opening in their calendar. And then they would have not only the, this coming, um, season and fall to work on it, but also next spring. So, um, he was, he was open to pushing it out till like, what, June 1st of next year? So I don't, I don't, I don't think that, that project would take that long.
When does he suggest we put it out to bid?
He would say that we would put it out to bid as soon as possible, within the next probably two weeks.
For something to be done by next summer?
Correct. Well, the construction window, you could start it in August of this year or July of this year. And that the cons, the completion date would be set, that it had to be finished by June 1st or June 15th of next year.
My, my concern is, is it's kind of unknown with this, uh, motel tax, the bid tax.
Well, how much work they have to do besides put the asphalt down? It's just down the alley, right? That's all we're talking about.
Mm-hmm. Well, the alley portion itself is about $100,000, that piece of it. Then the other one is, uh, putting the asphalt, there's a handicap parking space area. That would be newly created by the log cabin building where they currently have that little gravel pad with the Lions Club as their trailer. And then it's the resurfacing, um, uh, and just cleanup of the tennis court, basketball court and striping. Then there's some drainage work on the north side of the, um, Boys and Girls Club building. And then there's that, putting in that playground, um, play space with the fence, with the astroturf and taking out the racquetball courts.
So it's quite a bit of work to that project.
Yeah, just the demo. You know, the demo is probably the, the, the most difficult part, putting this back together.
We may not have exact numbers, but, uh, Stacia, do you know what we currently have in the bid budget from previous years? Because I know we've spent some of it.
We have 169,000 sitting in the bid.
Okay. So it doesn't sound like currently what we have in the bid would be even enough to cover if it came in at whatever our architect's original price estimate was on this. We'd still be short.
The engineer's estimate just for the alleyway and the other projects I just mentioned was about $220,000.
It's about 80,000.
So that, yeah, that amount wouldn't, wouldn't pay for that project. You'd still, you know, you'd still be, um, 50,000 short or whatever.
Any other discussion? Any public comment? Okay, hearing none, then I'm going to go ahead and address action item 7D. Bid board project number one, alley and parking and play space improvements, authorization to proceed with bid process. Do we have a motion?
Just doesn't cost the same thing to have a bid, except we don't want to play the game too long.
Correct.
We would just, we would just pick, let me cover what the bid process is just again real quick. We've got to put it in the paper twice, so there's the cost of the advertisement. We've got to pick dates of when it will be open and close. I think for the alley project and for the senior center project, we probably want the bid to be open for about three weeks. There's usually a pre, pre-bid meeting that occurs where we invite any potential bidders to ask any specific questions, so that would get scheduled. The bid would go on itself, then we pick a date of when the bid opening would be. And that's, the public can attend that and see what the results are. After that bid opening, um, then we bring it back to the bid board and to the city council for a final review. At that time, you can either accept it or reject it. So, you know, we're talking, if, if you say yes tonight, you know, it's going to, uh, it would go in. It'll probably just take us a few days to get the stuff put into the prevailing, um, and pick the dates. And then three weeks out, so you're probably looking at a, a number by the end of June. You would know what that number is by the end of June. And again, as far as the hotel tax, you're only going to know whatever happened in May, uh, for the hotel tax. You will know that June 20th or 21st. So if, if you table this, then it's going to be two more weeks. You won't have an answer till mid-July on bids.
Now, if this construction.
Yes, hang on a second, Alderman Minor, we've got Alderman Jarvis that already started to speak and has the floor.
If this, uh, construction took place during the summer, whether it be on the alleyway, it's really not going to affect downtown Main Street and the tourists. So if this construction needed to be done next August, July, August, September, or something like that, it's still not going to affect the, the tourist, correct?
Well, that, that alleyway, um, you know, if we're just talking about the alleyway, there are deliveries that are, that are made on that alleyway to the businesses. I know that there's employee parking back behind those businesses. We would have to coordinate, um, with the contractor and with those business owners to coordinate, you know, whatever their needs were as far as deliveries. Figure out where the appropriate spot is for employees to park. It just boils down to communication. As far as the general public being disrupted, um, probably not. I know the center, the senior center would be somewhat disrupted by it as well. You know, that's, whenever you do some remodeling, you know, you're always going to get some dust and, and, uh, and it's going to be a mess before you get back to normal, so to speak, so.
We've got, uh, Alderman Minor, did you have something that you wanted to say?
What was the, what was the date for the, uh, completion in the first bid? What did the bid amount come in at? Because I seem to remember it was like one and a half times the engineer's estimate. And are you now just talking about paving the alley? Or are you talking about doing the, the whole project?
Yeah, great, great questions. You're, you're right about the, the total. It was, it was about one and a half times, I don't have that exact number in front of me. It was, I keep wanting to think it was 340. Stacia's nodding her head. That it was 340 and we had originally said it was going to be 220. The intent, the intent is to do all elements of the project. So the asphalt, the astroturf for the Boys and Girls Club, the removal of the basket, or the racquetball courts, the resurfacing of the basketball and tennis courts. So all of it would be done. I know that there was some discussion about those who were listed, the tennis court and the Boys and Girls Club and the parking lot were all listed as ad alternates. And there was some concern that, you know, depending on how the bid came in, that we might exclude those from the base bid. And the base bid is the alleyway itself. That we might, if we lump it all together and say, we're definitely going to do all of it, we might get a better price as well rather than list them as ad alternates. The original bid letting, um, was done with a construction window, uh, was supposed to be done by June 15th of this year. And so it was a very short turnaround time, essentially saying we wanted it, to get it done, um, before the season really hit this year. But that was way before COVID-19 hit. So it was a tight construction window, but again, the amount of work that needs to be done for it isn't much. I think it's really a calendar issue, the people's already having work on the books that they need to take care of.
Well, if we do it, we need to do it all at one time, where it's going to end up like our sewer facility and it only get half built than our capacity, what we really need, so we might as well go and do it all while we're turning it down.
Yeah, I think you would get a better price. You know, I think, I think contractors would be nervous of saying, well, there's four elements to this project, but three of them could go away pretty easy, so I'm going to lump all my, um, extra costs into the mobilization fee on the, on the base bid item. But again, I think, I think expanding that, that operating, that construction window out, if we can get one or two more people to bid on it, then I think we've got a pretty good bid process. We still might not like the price, but at least we've got, you know, two or three people bidding on it. It's better than just one, so.
Alderman Minor, any other questions you had or comments?
No, that's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we've got someone from the audience that would like to speak, you want to come up here?
Dale Householder of the Senior Center. You know, I guess from our perspective, we're not in a hurry to get the Senior Center addition. So I would recommend you go with the alley project and hold off on the Senior Center to fall on the bid process. Put your ducks in the alleyway right now. That would be my recommendation and put a clerk on June 15th of next year. And then Senior Center can come in the alley. We're, we're, we're flexible and we're taking advantage of it ourselves. I mean, you know, we've been closed, we've lost three major fundraisers for the year. So, I mean, we've still got the money set aside for our portion. You know, I, I guess, I'd just like to see the Boys and Girls Club kicking a roll on their side. We're taking a good chunk on our side. That's my recommendation from the Senior Center.
Thank you, Mr. Householder. So, uh, Brett, I do have a question. So if, and, and kind of piggybacking on the point that Mr. Householder just made. So the way that it was bid out the first time is they were really separate individual pieces that came into, as a whole. If we put it all together, once the bid comes back, can we de-scope any of that? Okay.
No, it's, it would all be one package deal there. You'd have one project. Your only option would be to reject the bid, the total bid.
Accepted. Okay, so with that being said, um, the, the parts that, that make up the quote unquote project one or alley project are the alley and the parking. Okay, so those are two benefits that we saw. The other one is the play space, the play space improvements, and that is going to be specific to the Boys and Girls Club. So I'd like council to think about that and consider that and maybe have some discussion on, is that something that, um, I don't know that they've been approached relative to how this fits in, but I mean, is that something that still needs to be considered as part of this? Perhaps you add the alley and the parking together and let the play space be the second, you know, don't lump all of the pieces together, just two out of the three. I mean, there's some, some kind of flexibility that you guys have here in how you can look at this, unless you feel that it should move forward with everything together. Any thoughts on that?
Well, I don't think you're going to get anything out of the Boys and Girls Club, to be honest with you. I mean, I.
Going to do what now, Steve?
I don't think you're going to get anything out of the Boys and Girls Club as far as I'm pitching anything.
Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Minor?
I guess it was my understanding since the tennis court area, which they use for a play space, was going away as to why we were doing that other, you know, it was a trade-off. But I, I agree, I'm not comfortable with going to bids right now. I would move or, uh, suggest that we, uh, look at at least waiting, um, another 30 or 60 days. I don't see an urgent need to bid now for a completion date next June, so.
Okay, any other conversation?
See, you break it down just to the parking lot and the alley.
And then you can have, you could still have them bid the play space as an, an option.
So that would be, there'd be a, a core, a core bid and then that would be Alt 1. Alt 1 would be the playground stuff for the Boys and Girls Club. And then that one, that one could fall off if you didn't like the number. Because I think it was, I think it was $15,000 the last time it was. Engineer's estimate was to remove that racquetball court, it was about 15,000. And then it was another 35, 40 to put it all kind of, no, it was 65 to put it all back together with the astroturf, paving, the parking lot, the fence, everything.
Okay, so is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I'll move to, uh, um, extend the, uh, 60 days and review it again then.
Okay, so then I would assume that the motion would be that you're looking to table this till?
For 60 days.
For 60 days, okay, so that would be second meeting in July? Is there a second to that motion?
Also.
Second, Alderman Jarvis, any further discussion? Hearing none, um, roll call vote please. Phil Minor?
Yes.
John Johnson? Steve Jarvis?
Yes.
Okay, uh, motion carried. So I wanted to split them up, so the second one is for, um, it's actually bid board project two, it says one. But, uh, public restrooms and senior center addition, authorization to proceed with the bid process. So this is for the restrooms and the building, the, the senior center building, the community center building. So.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that I have any more additional information other than the, the drawings have been, um, completed by the architect that presented at that last senior center meeting that took place last week. That one's going to be a more expensive project.
Yes.
Yep.
So.
Mayor?
Absolutely. Alderman Minor?
Did we get a janitor's closet for city staff?
Is there a janitor's closet for city staff?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a, Buzz Grover has the, the latest set of plans. And I, so I can't look it up for you, Alderman Minor, right now, but I, I know that discussion took place, cause I had it myself with the, with Buzz and with the architect. So I will, I will verify that, and I will, and I will email you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, is anyone prepared to make a motion on this one?
I'll move that we wait, table it for sixty days and look at it again.
Okay, so table to the second meeting in July, which should bring us into the sixty days, any, any, is there a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Jarvis, any further discussion? Roll call vote please, Station? Steve Jarvis?
Yes.
Phil Minor?
Yes.
John Johnson? Motion carried. That'll end our action items, moving into discussion, item eight A, South Dakota travelers returning home, Alderman Jarvis.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring this up, about people that have been out of state or coming from out of state. You know, where's the stance about him attending public meetings? I mean, about quarantine and all, I mean, it's, are we open for business or not? I guess is what I'm asking. You know, just cause you come from out of state or from, or from out of state, you know, I don't want you to think you're not welcome, come to one of our public meetings, just because you haven't quarantined. You know, and, you know, as far as you, Mayor, and the staff, you know, what you expect of people, you know, coming in from out of state to a public meeting. You know, I, I don't know what your thoughts are, I've not heard. But I don't think that people should be turned away. And I don't think they should be told they have quarantined when they come to a public meeting.
Any discussion?
I guess for that to help true for me, I'd never be at one. Back and forth to Wyoming, first go to Weston County, Weston County's the only county in the state of Wyoming, you go there and there's public places.
They like one of four in the country.
Huh?
Like one of four in the country, counties.
And, you know, I'm not gonna ask this, but, you know, maybe there's other city employees that's been out of the state. I mean, if they're quarantined to come to a public meeting? I mean, that's just, I mean, I'm not gonna ask if anyone's here like that, but I just wanna make that statement.
So I'll go ahead and I will address some questions that you had of me, not speaking for anyone else. So as far as COVID nineteen in South Dakota, as we all know, this is a situation that none of us has faced. During the early stages of this particular national emergency, we all met as a council, and the council decided that it would be appropriate to put into action a resolution that recommended that people follow the guidelines that have been put in place by the Centers for Disease Control and by the South Dakota Board of Health. That was voted in unanimously and that has been in place. With that being said, there had been an overall concern in the state of South Dakota relative to snowbirds and people who would be returning from areas where they weren't here for a long period of time. So if they were staying for months on end, someplace else, and returning to South Dakota. In response to that, the Department of Health put out a advisory relative to what South Dakota travelers should do when they're returning home. And I so happen to have a copy of that, and Alderman Minor will send that to you as well. So based on the guidelines and the recommendations here, as you can see, there is a section where it says, once at home, people should quarantine themselves for fourteen days. So that was a recommendation that was put on the table by the department, or by the Centers for Disease Control. So we don't have, or the way that we've done our resolution was not one that requires people to do that, but it was one that recommended people do that. Because of the situation, we didn't know much. There had been a situation that, that occurred here at City Hall, where one of our aldermen had not been here for a while, and he had planned on attending a planning and zoning meeting. So as the situation is, through this whole thing, we have made meetings available via telephone. We record them, so I wanna make sure that everybody understands that there is not a desire on anybody's perspective to prohibit somebody from being able to attend a meeting, whether that be in person or whether that be virtually. In this particular case, we have an, an alderman, and as representatives of this city, as aldermen, I think it's our responsibility to hold ourselves to a higher degree of accountability. If you stand behind an ordinance that supports or suggests something, then we should do that as well. In this particular case, the alderman was advised that precedent had been set with planning and zoning meetings wherein members of the board had had phoned into meetings instead of attending them in person, in order to comply with guidelines. When that option was offered, the alderman decided not to come. So, that is my opinion on what's happened. We have passed these things that we're asking people to look at and adhere to. And in those situations, we as, we as well, as representatives, as aldermen, and as mayor of this town, have the accountability to do what we need to. So with that being said, that's where that particular situation arose. By no means was anybody told that they're not welcome to a meeting, that they're never invited to come to a meeting. But we've got a situation here where people are at varying places when it comes to their opinion of this disease and what's happening. We've got both ends of the spectrum. We've got people that are still very afraid to come out of their houses, and we've got other people that kind of feel it's business as normal. If we have one or two residents that have that, a feeling one way, we need to be sensitive and understand that. And the way that we do that is we support the regulations that are passed. So, that's what I have to say.
Yeah, I'm not the one that brought it up that it was an alterment, I just said there was a situation.
And I thought it was important that the, the information be clarified as it was put on the table, that people aren't welcome, and that's not true.
You know, well, you know, whenever you're, you're presenting it like you, I mean, it's just like here. It's presented as, let's see here. South Dakota travelers returning home. You know, I'm in it as a whole, whenever I made it, I wanted to discuss it, even people that live outside of this state. They're welcome to come to these meetings, and I don't think they should have quarantine just cause they are coming from out of state. You know, I know what you have here, but you know what, people, I think people here in Hill City have really been responsible. And I think if I went out of state, I don't need this to tell me if I'm okay to come to a meeting or not. Okay.
I, and that's fine, I appreciate your input on that. I wanted to make sure that we had clarification as to the individual incident. But completely clarify the fact that in no, at no time are people told that they're not welcome, either to come up to City Hall, yes, we are open for business, and we have maintained are open for business. We have not been like other towns that have closed their city hall. We've done the best that we can to ensure that people feel a sense of normalcy and a sense that things are being done here. So in this particular situation, to raise it because of that, I think is, is kind of questionable, because again, I think as representatives of this town, we need to hold ourselves to a higher accountability and make sure that we understand that we represent everybody. And even if there's one person that has an issue with this, then we have to take a look at what that one person is saying, their fears are real. And we still don't know. And we're still at a point in time where, now, I've seen license plates, so I understand that, that Mr. Alexander said that it's pretty much local people. I saw Alaska, I don't think that's within five hundred miles, I saw New York. I saw many, many states that are coming through our town right now. So we know that we've got the issue and we've got the risk of the disease spreading additionally because of that. However, at no point in time has the state ever said that we're gonna stop the spread of it. Okay, we slowed down the spread, so things can, so the medical field can catch up with it. And quite honestly, I don't know if we'll ever see any cases. However, we've been working this on a regular basis, daily we look at the numbers, we have regular calls with state officials, with other city officials, with various agencies and organizations. And we're doing the best that we can in order to be able to address this, to make sure that we understand that our economy is important, so we need the visitors. We understand that our people are at a higher risk, our population has a greater count of elderly people. So we have plans with which we can handle that, and I would invite any of the aldermen at any point in time to give us a call to find out what's happening here at City Hall and what's going on with COVID. We can tell you what calls we've been on, we, we are having pre-conversations or weekly conversations, or however the governor sets it up. There's a, a disaster management call that happens every week, so there's a lot of work that's being, that's been done on this. But at no point in time has anyone ever expressed the feeling that people aren't welcome. We're providing alternate options with which to do that. Any other discussion?
Is everyone wearing masks as far as the, the staff goes? Are they, are they putting them on right before the meeting starts, I mean? I mean, are, is people walking around without masks and right before the meeting starts, they put their mask on?
So that, and that-
I mean, what, what's the difference there?
So the difference, so from my perspective, you're correct. I didn't have my mask on until we got close to the meeting starting. I do that because I wanna respect the fact that we have a larger number of people that come in here. Today we had more than ten people, I don't wear my mask on the street. I don't wear my mask when I go into the grocery store. But when I know that I'm gonna be in a larger meeting setting, and there's actually gonna be other people, that's why I do, that's my personal choice. And I do that because that's been a recommendation.
It depends on what you read. Depends on what you read.
But, you know, I, I think-
You can read six articles, there's six different stories.
That's right, I mean, I've seen things that I question as well. But my opinion doesn't necessarily drive, nor should it override how other people feel.
Maybe they quit thinking, they quit feeling, start thinking, they might know more.
And I can't speak for other people, John, but I think, you know, at this point to pick an issue with such, with such a sensitive topic is, is not beneficial for anybody. We're all trying to do the best that we can, we're all tap dancing as fast as we can. We didn't get the playbook for this, we didn't get the rulebook for this. And we're going with things as we need to.
Well, maybe the whole country got the rulebook, you know, changes every day.
Exactly, but, you know, at this point in time, I can't tell you what's gonna happen, I don't have that crystal ball.
Bill, do you have anything?
I was just gonna ask, going forward, what is the official city policy? I, I visited Pennington County offices, and the, the deputy at the door asked a series of questions, like, have you had a fever? Have you had a cough? Have you been around anybody that's tested positive? But no one asked me if I'd been out of town for the last fourteen days or quarantined myself. So I'm curious what our policy actually is, and why would Pennington County have a checklist like that, that the deputy asks when you walk in the building? But we don't, are, are we missing something here?
So, there's two elements here, one is, is staff wearing masks. So I wanna make it clear that all staff has been offered a mask to wear during the day. They are not required to wear the mask. We're socially distanced from one another, I think enough within our office environment. And so during the day, we don't, we're not wearing masks, I'm not wearing a mask right now. So there's a certain amount of personal choice involved with it. We do have staff meetings to talk about, do we need to enhance or increase our, our handling of the public that comes in to visit City Hall? You know, this meeting, and Station and I were just talking about this before this meeting started. There are all kinds of things that go into putting this meeting on that nobody thinks about except for staff. Getting the phone ready, YouTube stuff going, and whatnot, to put a meeting on, the agenda, I mean, there's a lot that goes into it. It's mostly clerical work, but nonetheless. We're mandated by the state, state law that allows, that says you shall have an open meeting space for people to attend. And so we're mandated, we can't just lock City Hall and say, sorry, go call in on your phone at home, that's not how it works. So, we want people to come in, we know, we, we've known for months now, probably three months, that this is our biggest exposure opportunity as far as the public and employees coming into this small room for two hours, three hours, four hours, in the same space. This is our highest level of contact and interaction with people. We don't know if there's gonna be two people that show up or ten people, we've had a couple meetings where these were all full. So, we just kind of react as we can to it, but we can't turn anybody away. As for the protocol of allowing people to come into City Hall, we're stopping them at that front entryway and not letting them just come in unannounced. We don't ask them for their medical condition, or if they've got a fever, or been around people that are sick. There is a sign that we put on the door, just what, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, that says, if you're feeling ill, you know, I can't remember the ex, the exact wording, but essentially, if you're feeling ill, please don't come in. You know, please call us at whatever number. But, you know, we've not turned anybody away. And so, you know, I think what we've matched is our comfort level as employees to what the community need is. And I, I think the mayor said it exactly right, and what we've been seeing around the office is we wanted to maintain a level of normalcy here. Because in a pandemic, in a health crisis like this, people are really quick to lock everything down completely. Well, we're one of the few city halls in the Black Hills. I think one of only one or two that, that didn't close at all. We've been open this whole time. Pretty much every city other, shut down, and they just, you know, Spearfish just reopened, I think a week ago, or ten days ago, something like that. So, and, and granted, we're not in Rapid City, you know, they're going to have more cases, they're gonna have more interaction with people, they're gonna be busier at City Hall. Not saying we're not busy up here, but we've, we've made phone calls to people that usually pay cash for their water bills. We've, Betsy called them and said, we have a different alternative where you can still pay your bottom water bill, but not come in and expose yourself to us or us to you. And so we have, we have the luxury of doing that kind of tailored thing to our community that we can still assist without locking everything down. So, you know, that's where we're at, it's not locked down. I think if anything, we've projected the most welcoming City Hall, because you wouldn't find our name on the closed list. Pretty much every other City Hall in the Black Hills was closed, period.
So to answer Alderman Minor's question about the protocol, we do have the sign on the door that advises people, if you're not feeling well, please don't come in, and there's other ways to contact us. Everyone that comes in also stops at the front desk. At this point in time, we have seen no cases that are specific to our area. While I understand that we're part of Pennington County, and Pennington County is growing, I don't know that we've seen anything, at least within our local area, and there's really no way for us to isolate that. I can tell you that when I look at Custer County, as Custer County really is primarily made up of Custer, the city, and we're closer in proximity to them than we are actually Rapid City, Custer has had zero cases. They've had several hundred tests that have been done, and they've had zero cases as a result. So, right now, we don't have a protocol where we're taking people's temperatures or we're doing anything like that. But that's not to say that if things get worse and if numbers grow here, that we won't need to move to something like that. We also took into consideration the volume. We look at how many people actually come into the office every day, how many people have appointments. We've suggested that people make appointments if they need to come in and talk to us, so there are things that we've done that are different than normal procedures when it comes to people coming into the office. But again, look- But again, looking at Hill City individually, at this point in time, we aren't taking people's temperatures. We aren't doing any of those things. We do have sanitizer that's available. We have masks that are available. So all of that is here, um, and we will employ it as people decide that they want it. I've got someone in the audience. Do you want to come on up?
Let me address it from the P and C standpoint. Again, I think John touched on it. This thing is ever evolving. You know, what happened six weeks ago to last week? We have a different atmosphere. And we had one of our council, or one of our commission members that came from, uh, almost two months in Phoenix area, which was a hotspot six weeks ago. And he arrived back in town on a Sunday and our meeting was Monday night. And we were a little concerned. I mean, at that time, things were up in the air. You didn't know what was going to happen. I didn't. And so I did call Mr. Noem and asking, would you be comfortable staying home and doing it on the phone? He said, absolutely. He said, I was thinking that way myself. So things have evolved since then. You know, Vic said it at our meeting last Monday night. I mean, it's going to come. People are coming here. Things, atmospheres are changing. Uh, I don't think we're as afraid. I think we've come to realize we're going to get it in Hill City. We're going to have to accept that. Uh, we have to be prudent. We have to be cautious. But it's going to come. I, I, I think our reactionary, our fear is lessened now than it was six weeks ago because we have a better understanding that it's going to happen and, and let's approach it cautiously. And the social distancing, I think, is the safest thing we can do. So that's my concern.
Thank you, Mr. Zocker.
I know my life hasn't changed much. You know, either working home or me and the dog somewhere, if I was being around people, probably around either here or the grocery store, you know? Going to post office might be one or two.
I just, I thought I'd comment about, I'm, I'm wearing a mask. I don't know why you're wearing a mask or you're wearing a mask or you're wearing one or some of the other people. I put one on if somebody else is wearing one. I made contact with a thousand people today. I'm just figuring it out here a few minutes ago. You know, within three feet, all day long. I'm not necessarily worried about it myself. In fact, I'm a biologist and I wish it would just freaking go away and we'd forget about it. But I also am cognizant of whatever reason you're wearing a mask, I respect those reasons and yours and yours and yours. If, if we're all wearing it because somebody told us to, I'd be the first one to take it off. So the only reason I ever put one on is if I am, if somebody else approaches. I've got my mom tied up at home. I mean, just, just because of her age. But the idea is if somebody wants to wear a mask, I'm good with wearing a mask if they want to. Otherwise, I don't really wear the thing at all. You know, this is, you see me put it on in here. If I see somebody else got a mask on, I respect that. I'll go ahead and share my responsibility with them. I don't think I got it, but I'm probably going to be a carrier. You know, that sort of thing. So that's, that's the only reason why I have one on is if somebody else in the room has it on. I go to meetings, that's, I put it on just because out of respect for them, but I typically don't wear it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Okay, anything else? If not, we'll move on to the next discussion item? All right, discussion item eight, B, South Dakota DOT encroachment, Alderman Peterson. Alderman Peterson is not here with us today. However, I believe that Brett has had conversations on this. So Brett, do you want to go ahead and?
Yeah, if I can give a little bit of background on this, um, there was a conversation or a couple of conversations that occurred since the, the last council meeting. Um, there were some, uh, there's been some benches put on the sidewalk out on Main Street that have been there for a couple of weeks. And then I think there was a day where some more little stools or benches went out. We received some complaint calls. And so, um, the benches are kind of going back out on the sidewalk. Well, we've had conversations with those business owners in the past about saying, look, these benches are going to be going away. The new sidewalk is almost completed. Um, with this COVID deal, um, we weren't very aggressive with our enforcement because there were people doing takeout orders and whatnot. It was kind of nice to have a place for them to wait for their food while it was coming out. So again, we get into the COVID-19 kind of things. But, uh, the concern was, uh, I, I know that there was a conversation about encroachments, DOT encroachments that came through, and I'm not sure how that evolved. Uh, but essentially, um, there was a request to have Rich Zucker join us at this meeting. And so Rich and I actually touched base, um, on the phone last weekend, talked about, uh, I just talked to him about benches, trash cans, the new sidewalk, kind of what they were thinking as far as what would be allowable or permissible. And so I believe Rich is on the phone, uh, with us. And, and Rich, if you're there, just say hi.
I am on the phone. Hello, everyone.
Hi, Rich.
I'm going to turn it over to Rich here in a few minutes, but I just want to tell you what we've been doing as staff. You know, we had the budget discussion about a month and a half ago of saying, okay, we're going to freeze the, the trash can discussion as far as budget goes. We're not going to actively spend that money. But then we came back and said, look, we need to work on this project so that once the money, once there's a comfort level of ordering things and spending money, that we have a game plan in place. That's just manpower and, and some communication of what benches would work, what trash cans would work, what looks good for public works as far as the maintenance of it, the replacing of, of garbage bags, the pickup, making sure that we're not making a mess, a slop, you know, when we're removing it. Uh, making sure that the benches aren't encroaching too far into the walking path of the sidewalk. Um, making sure that the benches are wide enough to sit on, that they're useful. Uh, so we're having those discussions. Danny and I went out to the sidewalk like late last week, took some measurements. So we kind of know what we're working with. But I'll let Rich explain kind of our conversation and what DOT's kind of expectation as far as ADA compliance and any encroachment on the Main Street sidewalks. So I'll, I'll turn it over to you, Rich.
All right, thanks Brett. With any pedestrian path, the ADA goals and the DOT goal is to maintain five feet of clear path. Okay, Hill City has some challenges. Keystone has some challenges. Every community has their own challenges with maintaining the five feet of clear path. Specifically in Hill City, I think, with the upper and lower sidewalk, yours is even more challenging. We recognize that five feet, um, as a goal, more than a mandate. That means that there are going to be some very specific locations that we can go less than five feet. Specific as in trash cans and light poles, those type of features. We understand that there'll be spots where either the upper or the lower sidewalk may be reduced to less than five feet. In those cases, we really need to do our best to maintain three feet of sidewalk. And that's to allow a single wheelchair to pass. The remainder of it, the clear path of five feet is the goal. Historically, there's been benches in just about every community, benches or tables. Um, I talked with our ADA person in Pierre. And what we came up with for benches is if you had six feet from the leading edge of that bench to the rail, we would permit that. The six feet comes from, if you're going to put a bench out there, we're going to assume somebody's sitting there. If nobody's going to sit there, then you don't need the bench. Six feet gives a foot for someone to pull their knees in and let somebody go by, let the five feet go by. So garbage cans, Hill City has always done a good job keeping things picked up. That's where the three feet comes into play. We've moved a few of the light poles. I think they're probably fine where they are, where we don't have that problem. But that would be another case where we'd allow some, just a very specific spot to go down to three feet.
So there's no objection from the state to put the benches, trash cans, flower pots? Or anything else down there?
Yes, unless you can maintain five feet clear path.
Okay, outside that, it's good to go.
So why don't we talk a little bit about?
I think you have some spots. I don't think there's very many. But I think there are some spots where they'll fit.
Okay.
So when, when Danny and I went down to Main Street, you know, we, one of the reasons why we're doing this now and didn't do it along with the sidewalk project is one, we never, we never knew when the sidewalk project was actually going to be bid and start construction. Plus, we wanted to physically know the space once it got completed so that we could better fit it with benches and whatnot at a later date. Um, we measured, Danny and I measured from the wall, um, from the building side of the wall back to the, the building facade. And so we got a, the, the accurate measurements there and, and took Rich's advice about the clearance. And so then we were looking at putting benches and trash cans along that inside of the railing, not up against the buildings, but benches and trash cans along the railing. And so there's a fairly consistent area. It's about, I would say about, oh, 21, 22 inches away from that wall that is consistently kind of an area that we could improve with, with the trash cans and whatnot. We've already got the encroachments that exist from the awning support posts in some locations. Um, the lights that Rich mentioned, you know, the, the public streetlights, um, some of them are sticking 21, 22 inches into the sidewalk, but it's still maintaining that, that small little area of ADA where you can get the, the wheelchair through. And so we're looking at those spots. And if we could put the trash can or the bench right next to the light, um, or if it makes sense if there's a, 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 a better flat spot or a bigger opening further on, uh, you know, we're looking at maybe like four to six trash can locations and, and maybe two to four bench locations. Uh, that mid-block bump out has created that upper sidewalk gained about two feet of space. So there's definitely room to do something up in there. But I think, um, I, I think if we, uh, now that we know exactly, uh, what the expectation is from DOT, I don't, I don't think there will be an issue. I think the issue will really be what do you want the trash cans and the benches to look like? Uh, but again, I think they'll be up against the railing, not up against the building itself. So you'll probably be, when you're sitting there, you'll be facing the building instead of facing the street. But one thing I've noticed in the past two weeks with more activity around here, that wall, uh, between the lower and the upper sidewalk is doing what we thought it would do. And that's the one thing we saved from the old sidewalk is that step essentially where people can sit on that ledge and eat an ice cream cone and watch the parade. And I've seen several families over the past two weeks do exactly that, where they're sitting kind of underneath that railing and enjoying the traffic and, and watching the world go by. So I think there's already a natural bench built right into it. So, um, you know, I just, I, I wanted Rich to, to, to give you the, the expectations from DOT directly. Uh, and so we'll continue to work with him as far as the location and number of benches and whatnot that we're looking at. Um, I think the, the question from the staff level that came up was more of, uh, we want to make sure that we're enforcing this rule and that we want to apply it even-handedly with all the people that have benches out there right now that are probably causing non-compliance with what Rich just described. And so, um, you know, I, I think the plan is, after this conversation, is to move forward on that and say, you know, this, this has to evolve and change so that we are in compliance.
And just to add, the bench and trash can initiative is not just specific for the upper sidewalk, Main Street, the new sidewalk. So the thought is that even though the style may be a little different, um, if they're throughout the rest of the city, that it's going to be something that flows. So whether it be the same material, something like that, that will make sure that we don't have a difference in just that one spot and then the rest of the community. So it is really to take a look at the business district all in toll and not just that part of the sidewalk.
Yeah, we've taken an inventory of all of our trash cans that we have at parks and the different locations and, and potential for benches to be added in. And so it will be essentially a system-wide, um, change. And maybe we do, you know, three blocks of Main Street first with benches and then see where we can expand on that at different locations. Trash cans, we'll put those right back where they currently are. That one's pretty easy. We already have identified spaces for it.
We've got someone from the audience that would like to talk? Hang on just a second, Bill. We've got somebody from the audience.
One quick question. Whose responsibility is it to enforce compliance with the ADA on that sidewalk? Is it DOT or is it?
So the question on the table is whose responsibility is it to enforce the encroachment on the sidewalk?
Yeah, so the city of Hill City has a, a maintenance and essentially operating agreement with the state. So it would fall on us to enforce it.
Absolutely. Okay, Alderman Minor?
I thought I heard Mr. Zucker say that the ADA specialist in Pierre was requiring six feet of sidewalk to have a bench so that, uh, there was a minimum of three feet clear. So other than the bump out, where behind the railing do we have six feet width of sidewalk?
Um, you actually have an opportunity for a bench in front of Turtle Town in that area. Their building is recessed back. There's plenty more sidewalk there. And so it's not, it's not the narrowest part of the sidewalk. Uh, I think there may be an opportunity, um, south of Desperado's for a bench because there's an empty lot. And there was, uh, there's a street light there. Uh, I, I don't remember. Those are just two of the spots that I remember. So there's, they're few and far between. The, the center bump out is obviously the best opportunity for benches, but there is a couple of other ones.
Okay, and then I know, I know we're trying to fit in trash cans, but I also know that the minute you start throwing away pop and ice cream and all that, the bees and the yellow jackets and all the hornets swarm the trash cans. And so now you're putting them right where everybody's walking instead of before when they were down on the lower level where there were fewer people? I'm kind of wondering if we aren't going to create a problem there.
Yeah, and that, that's, that's a great question. You know, with the trash cans, you always think about lids that keep the rain out and the snow and won't blow off in the windstorm. And then it's always the question of, okay, what has been thrown away? Um, you know, that's definitely something to consider. That lower sidewalk, you know, in this design, we made that lower sidewalk as narrow as we could so that we could make the upper sidewalk as wide as possible and then move those streetlights up so that the bottom sidewalk can be completely ADA compliant. Um, there's, there's no way we can put the trash cans on the lower part. Uh, it would defeat, it would defeat the whole purpose of, of the plan. But, um, you know, maybe there's another innovative answer to that question about the bees and the flies and whatnot.
And I think it's something that can be considered when we're working on what does it look like, right? So what's the design of the container and things like that?
Thank you.
Nope, thank you. Okay. Any other questions or discussion on the DOT encroachment? Okay, I'd like to thank you for joining our conversation, Mr. Zucker. It's always a pleasure. And we look forward to working with you on this as well as any other projects that come our way.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you, you too.
Okay, so let's move on into report items, uh, common council. Let's start with Alderman Minor on the phone. Um, Alderman Minor, do you have any report items?
Attended the Hill City Arts Council Board Meeting and talked about the city budget, what we've been doing, and that the prospects for the 2021 budget and that the prospects for the 2021 budget out of Triple B are probably gonna be pretty tough. Just to alert them to plan ahead.
Okay. Good, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Jarvis. Alderman Johnson?
Uh, yeah, the last meeting was last Tuesday night. To date, they've had eighty-seven calls. But, um, last, I think over the last month, they had eight, that's all, 'cause, uh, everybody ain't calling. And they're, um, I don't know else they do it. About it, I guess. They did have a discussion on, if some of the people happen to get sick, what do you do? Basically, it was hoping Custer and Keystone, they'll fill in. We've only got so many personnel, so.
Yep, okay.
About it.
Okay. And then I'll go ahead and be as brief as possible. So the first thing I wanna talk about is the continued COVID monitoring. We touched a little bit on it in our earlier conversation. Last week, I had sent out some information to the general public via Facebook. And I also sent the same information to the council addressing how we're monitoring it and what we're going to be looking to do in the future. It's a way that we can try to be proactive and we'll continue to do that. The other thing that I wanted to make sure that I bring to, to people's attention is, early on in this, and I think the biggest impact that we're gonna have from this COVID is actually how it's affecting people mentally and emotionally. I don't think that the, the illness itself is something that's gonna have as far-reaching implications as everything that we've been through. So with that being said, just make sure that when you're out interacting with people, you kinda keep that in mind. I've seen people that haven't, that I agree, I've talked to on a daily basis that have changed and have been a little different. And I really kind of equate that to the COVID virus. If people were on the edge, they've just been pushed over. People that never necessarily had issues, I think, are, are a little bit edgy. So let's just keep that in mind and understand that people coming from other places are gonna have other attitudes and ideas as well. In addition, our census is happening. So I just received notification, uh, from our coordinator that they're gonna be hitting the pavement again and going to individuals' houses. We're at about thirty percent of census completion in the city of Hill City. So if you haven't already done so, please make sure that you either respond to the information that came in the mail, if you've received it. You can also go online and fill out the survey online, which is a very simple process. And then I believe if your house has not been identified, you will have someone that's gonna be coming around and knocking on your door for that information. So this is very important to our city. It helps us understand our population, our growth. Um, and also is used in helping us get into some programs and some things that we can look at from a city perspective. So please make sure that you pay attention to that and abide by that. Um, the Boys and Girls Club has asked me to read something relative to an event. So Food Distribution Day is Wednesday, May twenty-seventh, 2020, at ten thirty to eleven thirty. Feeding South Dakota will be in the front parking lot of the Boys and Girls Club of the Black Hills in Hill City along Walnut Avenue with their truck distributing food. This will be set up as a drive-through, so there's no need to get out of your vehicle. If you have any questions, you can contact the Boys and Girls Club at six oh five, five seven four, two zero one zero. So yet another way that the community is working together to make sure that we all have what we need during this difficult time. A week from today is going to be our election. So just a note, everybody get out there and vote. I know some folks have already done early voting and voting by the mail, but if you haven't done so, get out there and vote. And I believe our polling location this year is gonna be the same. It's at the school. Okay, so the polling location will be at the school. And Stacia, do you know what the hours are for that?
From seven in the morning till seven at night.
Okay, so seven AM to seven PM are the polling hours. Um, just a couple of observations. I was on Main Street quite a bit this weekend, as it being a, a, a large weekend. I haven't had an opportunity to reach out to any of our hoteliers or folks that provide accommodations, but those businesses that I have talked to, I heard what other people have already expressed. It's been a, it was a very good weekend for them. Um, some of them had indicated to me that their May has been the best since they've had their business open, which has been ten-plus years. So, I'm continuing to hope that we pick this momentum up while we continue to control who gets sick and what comes through here and all of those things. So, it was a good thing, when you have an opportunity, just take a look at that. The train opens next weekend, so I think that, um, that's gonna be a big plus for us as well. We haven't had the benefit of some of our larger attractions. And the last thing that I wanted to talk about is the street condition survey. So I know we had folks from, um, up on Deegan Drive here, expressing interest about their streets being paved. One of the things that we had talked about is, let's totally understand what the condition of all our streets are so the next, so the council and whoever, whatever iterations are after that can make educated decisions on what gets done and how things get done. Um, Brett is currently working with Kale on that, and I should have a target date for completion by our next meeting. So I wanted to let everybody know that that's happening. Um, I agree, we should have a plan, we should know what we have, but I think we need to take a look at everything in totality and understand where we sit as a city. And other than that, that was all I had. I'm gonna turn it over to Brett, who's gonna give us a real quick update on what he's got on his plate.
Uh, Main Street sidewalk, um, I, I think that speaks for itself. We're just really waiting for some railing down at Desperados to fabricate, uh, some of the ramp pieces over there. And then we're gonna have to refabricate in front of Turtle Town those two sections that were damaged with that car collision. Um, so inching forward, it should be complete in the next couple of weeks, I would imagine. Um, Business Improvement Project, again, I think we've covered that. The plans are ready. We'll revisit, uh, going out to bid in sixty days. The Water Reservoir Project, the crossing for the railroad is complete. That was put in last week. Uh, and so it looked good. I was up here on Sunday and I was with my kids and we all jumped up and down on it, so. I do have pictures on my phone if anybody's interested. I didn't put it up here, but.
How much did it finally come in at?
Uh, I think it was what, ten, ten grand total? So what they did, I can describe what it is, is the track goes through that little area. Um, there's kind of a little slight curve to it, so we had to put it in at a little bit of an angle. What they did is all the, the supportive railroad ties underneath the track, um, got replaced or brand new. There's about nine or ten of those. And then there's, um, specially cut boards that bring it up to the same level as the tracks with the opening on the inside. So it's, it's drivable and all the weights just are bred it on that wood.
Is the road already done going up to it?
No, this is just the crossing. Yeah, the road will be built by the contractor once we go out to bid. Um, I have not heard back from, um, Rural Development yet about, they have everything that they need. Um, so we're trying to stay in touch with them on a weekly basis, but I don't have any answers for us as far as moving forward and going out to bid for that project either. So, um, that's all I know on that, but the crossing is in. Uh, the last one, Major Lake Bridge Project, I just talked to, um, Nate Buscher with DOT today. And the report I was waiting for has been forwarded over to, um, the Forest Service for comments and questions and whatnot. And there's a huge enviable string of people involved to making sure that our sewer line isn't disturbing some archaeological secret place. So, anyway, so that's, I have a weekly call with DOT on that one, so that's it.
Okay, all right. With no other business, the meeting is adjourned.